Okay. Personnel Subcommittee Meeting and Committee of the Whole Meeting. Roll call, please.
Ms. Coppola.
Present.
Ms. Gaetley.
Present.
Mr. Satterwhite.
Present.
Mr. Castellanos.
Present.
Mr. Ford.
Present.
Mr. Nicholson.
Present.
Mayor McGee. Absent.
Okay. Questions or comments? Attorney Satterwhite.
Thank you. I know that we are meeting today to discuss a very important position that was held by Attorney Mahos for a long period of time. And I know that we discussed prior to putting the RFP, you know, our real desires as to what the next attorney for the school committee would look like. And it looks like we only got practices to respond and not an attorney that would work in the capacity like Attorney Mahos did. And, you know, what is the purpose of tonight? To actually hire one of these without interviewing them? Or to whittle it down to a couple?
Well, we had our discussion before. I do remember that we said that we would bring people, bring them in for interviews. So, you know, if there's, if there's a desire to bring in some particular ones, or I'll ask Attorney Markopolous. If we put out the RFP for all five, is it our obligation to call in all five?
No. And if I could just give you a few of my thoughts.
Excellent.
If it's okay with you. What I understood was that this would be the first step in process. I've had a couple of conversations with the school committee member Gaetley about the fact that no sort of local attorneys have applied. My understanding in speaking with Tim Leonard is that this was put into the Central Register, it was put into Mass Lawyers Weekly, and it was also put into the Mass Municipal Lawyers Association. It was not advertised in the item, or the Salem paper, or the Boston paper. So, I guess I would ask you to pause and say, do you want to re-advertise? Maybe advertise in the same places you did, and maybe some additional places, to see if you get sort of a wider net of applicants, first thing. The second thing is, you know, I have looked at the materials pretty thoroughly. They're all qualified people. It's, what are you looking for in this particular person? And I think when you are satisfied sort of with the pool of candidates that you have, whether you decide to advertise a second time or not, I think the next natural step is to call in all, or selectively call in those that you're interested in, and have them make a presentation to you. I would not get hooked, I would not sort of get locked in the, into the hourly rate, or what they describe their services. I think, in my opinion, you should be more concerned about the presentation, the people when they come before you, how you feel about them, what they say they can or can't do, or willing to do, or not willing to do, and get a sort of a feel about the candidates, and how comfortable or uncomfortable you are with them. Dealing with a law firm is going to be a lot different than dealing with Attorney Mahos, obviously. Attorney Mahos was there, he would respond, call you back the same day, answer your questions, give you ideas, thoughts, whatever. I doubt that it's going to be the same with a law firm. I'm not saying they won't respond timely. They will, but it'll be different. And I think you should know that, and I think the way you can sort of explore that is in actually having the persons come before you and make a presentation. And you can ask them the specific detailed questions. Who would the contact be? Or who would, who are the persons that would be the contact? Who would come to the meetings? A lot of law firms and a lot of cities and towns don't have lawyers coming to every school committee meeting. Do you want that? Do you not want that? I mean, these are things that, you know, you've got to decide amongst yourselves. If they're not physically here, that means obviously that there will be a natural delay. There might be a legal question, it'll have to then be emailed, or sent, or called into the attorney. Chances that they respond that same night, probably, maybe they do, maybe they don't, but, you know, it's different than having a live person in front of you that can sort of give you their opinion right on the spot.
It might actually lead to us not having an attorney at our meetings.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Our meetings are obviously dictated by how much is on the agenda, and that might impact that as well, which is.
Absolutely.
We don't want that to happen.
You know, and I'm just looking at this, and I don't want you to take it in a bad way, but, you know, you've got Westwood, Norwood, Quincy, Wellesley, you know, Lowell. I mean, this is some traveling distance here. And, you know, it goes to availability. If you want somebody here every school committee meeting, every subcommittee meeting, are they physically, are they, or are an associate going to be here? You want to make sure that someone is here. But that's what I would suggest, I think maybe the first discussion is, do you advertise again in, you know, more, you know, venues or whatever, papers or whatever? You know, then, when you get to a point where you have a sort of a pool of candidates, then you can look through them. Sure, you can call everybody in, you don't have to. You can decide, you know, maybe out of these six or whatever, or 10, or whatever ultimately it is, you know, I'd like all 10 of them to come in. And maybe you just do that anyway. And why I say that is, maybe you'll just get a better feel of sort of a wider group of people and attorneys, and how they deal with their different committees. All of these people represent different school committees. They may sort of have different ways and tactics, and sort of protocols as to how they approach things. And I think you should hear it live from a person here telling you, you know, describe for me what you do at this school committee, at this city or town. What exactly is your role? And have that person, he or she, explain, this is what I actually do. So you get into the, sort of the weeds with, you know, what are they going to do? What do they know how to do? So you have some expectation as to what they're going to do for you.
Do you have any, do you see any benefit in posting locally? I mean, I think we're going to ask that the attorney be at all the meetings.
I don't see any harm. I mean, this is a very important position. I was, quite honestly, I was surprised. I thought we would get a dozen plus people in firms. I was very surprised. I told, you know.
Because I think the committee is going to want.
I was surprised, quite honestly. I thought, I thought there'd be a dozen plus firms and individuals, and certainly more local, you know, I didn't see any Lynn lawyers, I didn't see any Salem lawyers, or anybody sort of, you know, within five or 10 miles from Lynn. That was kind of surprising, quite honestly.
Don't want to.
You know, you could advertise in the Lynn item, we could send an advertisement directly to the Lynn Bar Association, the Essex County Bar Association, we could advertise even wider in the Salem newspaper, any newspapers you wanted to. Contact the Mass Bar Association, the Essex Bar Association, Lynn Bar, Salem Bar, whatever.
Ms. Gaetley.
Thank you very much for coming and bringing this up. I was so glad that you would, this is so loud. Sorry. I was so glad that you were there to pick up the phone when I was trying to look through all of these firms.
Right.
That lived so far away.
Right.
And I just, to me, it was like, our RFP really was like someone closer that we could pick up the phone and talk to, like you. So, I wouldn't object to re-advertising, and the item in Salem, and the Lynn Bar, the Essex Bar, so that we can get more local lawyers.
I think you need to do that. I, quite honestly, if I were a school committee member, I would not be happy with this group. Not that they're not qualified, they're all qualified people.
Yes.
But I would just want to see more applicants to start with. And then I'd get more specifically into it.
Ms. Castellanos.
So, my question is, you know, I want to reiterate, so I do see re-advertising as, I support that. Do we need to modify the RFP or post it on just a, if we didn't get that many hits, right? If we didn't have, if this wasn't, like you said, you were surprised. I was surprised too, because, do we have to modify, is there a modification that we have to make, to make it more desirable?
Several people worked on the RFP. I mean, you folks looked at it.
Yeah, it looked, I didn't.
I don't think the RFP is the issue. I don't think so. I mean, we don't want to sort of start saying, you know, you don't have to do this, or do that, or whatever. I mean, we don't want to make the RFP easier for anybody. I think you just want to maybe get a broader response from people out there.
So making it more appealing, though? So if we take another try at advertising, and we try another shot, and if we don't have another, so if we get back to, because the time is in essence right now, so if we get to a point, what's a timeframe are we looking at? Because we are.
I think Tim Leonard probably could advertise again within the next two weeks, I think. I think that's realistic. And then he could have a response period two weeks thereafter, or something to that. I mean, I'd have to check with him, but I don't think it's a big deal.
Attorney Nicholson.
Thank you. Yeah. I'm also supportive of reposting, trying to get a broader pool, and to the suggestions you mentioned. I agree with Member Castellanos that, you know, we, obviously there's some time urgency here. And then, you know, maybe it would be helpful if there's a way for us to get a list of where it was posted, and then where it's going to be posted, just to see if anyone else has any sort of suggestions.
We can do that. I'll speak with Tim Leonard tomorrow.
Great.
But I believe it was, it was advertised in the Central Register, the Lawyers Weekly. I know that, because we saw that in the Lawyers Weekly, and we saw it also in the Mass Municipal Attorneys Association.
Yeah. So I think, I think the bar associations, like you mentioned, are a great idea. I think it'd be worth reaching out to MASC to see if they have any suggested lists or posts. You know, sometimes even the law schools, the area law schools will push, will push something like this out. So, yeah, if we could see that list, and then sort of also met places to.
Maybe what I do is, I speak to Leonard, get an idea of what the timeframe is for the advertising, and when he can get the stuff back. And maybe add, you know, suggest a bunch of other places where it could be advertised. Send it to you. You all comment, you know, maybe you should also post it here, or send it here. That's great.
Perfect. Yeah, that's great. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Ford.
Is it, do you know if it's in the RFP that we require the attorney to be at the meetings?
Honestly, I don't know, and I don't recall. I think it was, I think it was in there. I believe it was.
I think that's important for us to state that, because I, you know, I think the members will agree, we want an attorney here, because there was a lot of on-the-spot decisions that John made, and I think they have to be made. You can't wait two weeks.
It's your prerogative.
I think it should be.
I'm just saying, I am aware that there are cities and towns that hold the meetings without attorneys present. Within your prerogative, you're hiring, you decide what the scope of services are, what the attendance is, what the requirements are, what you want from this person. And you shouldn't be rushed either. I understand, like you say, you know, I understand there's an urgency, but we want to get this right. You want to get the right person in there. Or firm.
Attorney Satterwhite.
I make a motion to repost the RFP, based off of the discussion that we just had with Attorney Markopolous, making sure that it's re-advertised in a greater fashion, and a list be provided to the members, to see if it needs to be amended to include additional places of advertisement through Tim Leonard. And if it's not in there, sorry.
And just another suggestion, we can look at the RFP again, to John's point. Look at it and see if there's any revisions we can make. And certainly you folks can do the same thing. Before we put it out. So we'll look at the, so what I understand you're asking us to do is, we'll, I'll speak with Leonard, look at the timeframe to re-advertise, how long it would take to get the replies back, then a list of additional places that we could advertise or post in. Some of them, most of them, I think, will be free, and those associations will just disperse the ad. They'll just send it out. And then look at the RFP again. Maybe those three things, we do those three things, get back to you with some comments, you folks comment, then we make a decision and put it out.
I agree. So moved.
Second. Her second.
Second.
Okay. Is there any other discussion or questions? Yes.
Just one, just one brief. So should we be following up with the, with the folks who already went through the process with us, to give us, to give them a courtesy, to let them know that we're going to be just re-advertising, just, so we, because we, if we.
My office can do that if you'd like.
Yeah, could we follow up with them?
Quick email.
Because they did put out a lot of.
Sure. Once the vote, once, if we, if I get from Mary some, something, you know, that there was a vote taken, we can certainly forward to all of these individuals, copy of the vote, and say, this is what we're doing. We'll make sure you also get, you know, the second posting, or whatever. Certainly.
By second posting, do you think that they need to, unless, if we don't make any changes, just they could, you know, because they've done a lot of work on a lot of their packages, just submit the same packages? If we make no changes in the.
Yeah. Certainly, we could say, depending on what you do, we could say that you're welcome to submit additional materials if you would like. If not, we still have the materials that you initially sent to us, and we'll review them, you know, when the time's appropriate.
Excellent. Good.
And maybe I say to them, if you want, I say to them too, that after we re-advertise, there will be a process of reviewing all of the materials, and then invitations to make presentations, in a general way. We'll give you a draft email for you guys to look at, and then you decide if that's what you want to do, that's what we'll do.
Excellent. Okay. If there are no other question.
Mary.
Oh, yes.
Could you just add at the end, recommend to the full committee?
Yes.
Thank you.
Amended to say that. Thank you.
Second. Roll call, Mary.
Ms. Coppola.
Yes.
Ms. Gaetley.
Yes.
Mr. Satterwhite.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the 13th regular meeting of the Lynn School Committee, December 21. I'd ask everyone to stand and join me with a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. First on the agenda is the minutes. Entertainer motion to accept the minutes.
I make a motion that we accept the minutes of the Committee of the Whole Meeting on August 19, 2021.
Second.
Second.
Excuse me. Need to do a roll call first.
Oh.
We'll start with a roll call, then we'll go to the minutes. Mary, would you start the roll call, please?
Mr. Castellanos.
Present.
Ms. Coppola.
Present.
Mr. Ford.
Present.
Ms. Gaetley.
Present.
Mr. Nicholson.
Present.
Mr. Satterwhite.
Present.
Mayor McGee.
Present.
Observing, Dr. Tutwiler. Ms. Powers. Ms. Regiro. Mr. McHugh.
And I make a motion that we accept the minutes of the meeting for the Committee of the Whole on August 19, 2021. Second.
Member Satterwhite.
It looks like there was just an error, because the meeting on August 19 is the special meeting, so, because if you look at it, the date just says 201. But I believe all we had was the seventh special meeting on August 19, which is B.
So let's, we had a number of things on that meeting, but it was a special meeting, so.
I think, I think, do you consider having the retreat as one meeting, and then we ended that, and we started a second meeting? So that's why there's two. Yep.
So let's, obviously the date is August 19, 2021. So I would say that we accept, because there was two separate meetings we did come into, so I would take that and move forward on that. First motion with the recommendation that it's 2021, not 201.
Second.
Second, roll call, please.
Mr. Castellanos.
Yes.
Ms. Coppola.
Yes.
Mr. Ford.
Yes.
Ms. Gaetley.
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson.
Yes.
Mr. Satterwhite.
Yes.
Mayor McGee.
Yes.
I make a motion that we accept the seventh special meeting on August 19, 2021. Second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Castellanos.
Yes.
Ms. Ford, I mean, Ms. Coppola.
Yes.
Mr. Ford.
Yes.
Ms. Gaetley.
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson.
Yes.
Mr. Satterwhite.
Yes.
Mayor McGee.
Yes.
Next on the agenda is appointment and elections. Dr. Tutwiler, would you like to speak to that, please?
Absolutely. Happy to welcome three people to, two people to new roles, and one person to the district. First, Mara Shearer, who's been appointed the Custom Project Manager/Report Writer, which is the leadership role in our data center. Wish her well in that role, it's a big, big position. Also, Jackie Westrin, formerly nurse at Cobbitt, has been appointed the Assistant Director of Nursing. And then lastly, we welcome Timothy Moriarty, who is replacing Fred Gallo as Vice Principal at Lynn Tech. Welcome, and good luck to all three.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Tutwiler, and congratulations, and good luck to the new appointments. Next on the agenda, it was under new business. Member Ford, update on the Marshall Middle School property?
Yeah, tonight we're going to talk about, we've got Mr. Seer and Mr. Staben are here. Would you want to come up? And they're going to outline the proposal of what we're going to do with the Marshall Middle property.
Thanks, welcome. Consulor Seer, Consulor Staben.
Thank you. Great to be here. Nice new chairs.
Different meeting.
Love them.
They feel better, I'll tell you that.
You need them for the length of some of these meetings.
You're well aware of that, aren't you?
I know. It's, it's great to be back. As you all know, we've tried, this is the third time, hopefully, third time's the charm, of sending out an RFP on the former Marshall Middle School site on Porter Street. This has been a blight on the neighborhood, as Darren could attest to, being the ward counselor, in the five years since we vacated that, that building. There's been fires, break-ins, stripping of metal, you name it, dumping, it's happened down there. You know, then there were talks with the asbestos issues, that it could cost upwards of $8 million to take that building down. You know, we, we sent out a couple of different RFPs that were not performing, didn't meet the requirements of the, of the RFP with the bids that we got. Sent it out again. We had five respondents this time around. Mr. Ford, Mrs. Coppola helped in that process, helped us go through all of the proposals. We had stacks of books at high. And the one that was chosen, actually, Ms. Gaetley was there as well, at the public property meeting, the night where we agreed that the East Boston Community Development Group was the best suitor for that site. Not only do we not have to worry about the $8 million to take the building down, their bid was to pay us $2.5 million. So, that's really a $10.5 million win for the city. It's a win for the 104 residents who wait on waiting lists, seniors, to get into affordable senior, senior housing. And it's a win for the neighborhood. So what we're asking, as we have in the past, is for the school committee to, to vote, to turn that property over to the city, so we can go forward with the closing on it. The East Boston Group has a great track record in refurbishing old schools. Summer before last, Attorney Lamanna and I went and toured a lot of their buildings, including the original East Boston High School. That just came out phenomenal. And even preserving some of the old features in the school for residents to enjoy, like the lecture halls and stuff, is now a common space, and it, and it looks really cool. And they have also offered that up to members of the school committee, if you'd like to go tour, tour their sites in, in East Boston. So, unless Consulor Seer has anything to add.
So, as a ward counselor, we've had, over the years, minimum several meetings with the neighborhood, even before the old marshal left that building. There's always been an issue and a problem in the neighborhood with the building, even when it was a school. Everybody agreed, they don't want to see another school in the neighborhood, they don't want to see, see it used, to put families in, in the building. The neighborhood just can't support that. The street is a narrow, one-way street on one side. Jackson Street is multifamily homes that surrounds the building. In all the meetings, it was clear what the goal was for the, for the neighborhood, what they wanted to see. And they wanted to see senior housing in that location. Kings Beach Towers, which is like a half a mile away, everybody's aware, there's a five-year waiting list to get into that building. A lot of the seniors that live in that area probably would qualify to get into this building. It's going to be over 62. If the school committee sees it fit, to turn it over to us, and we can really, you know, put it out to the East Boston Group to take it over. And the reason I say that is because there's a lot of very low-income people that live in that neighborhood. And some of them even have owned houses for many years, they're starting to struggle maintaining the buildings, paying their taxes, whatever it may be. So, I'm not saying that they would qualify to get in there because of the number of people that'll probably apply. The greatest part of this whole thing is the East Boston Group will take possession of the building immediately, be able to close, I think it's within 180 days, where the other groups couldn't do that. This group actually has the money to buy the building outright. They would become responsible for it, maintain it. As Rick said, I'm the ward counselor there. We have had numerous problems there with fires in the building, numerous problems with homeless people. No matter how we boarded the building up, they managed to get in there. Police and fire are always having to respond, because somebody's either overdosing, or that there's people in the building. And when police and fire respond, they can't even go into the building because of the contamination that's in there. So they have to suit up, there's a process before they can get in there. So it's a real blight, and it's a real issue, safety-wise, not just for somebody getting in the building, but for our own emergency responders, as well as the neighborhood. So I urge the school committee to really consider all the things that I'm saying. As I said, we've been working on this for a long time.
And we're also joined by Assistant City Solicitor Jim Lamanna, and CFO Mike Bertino. I don't know if either of you have anything to add.
Thank you, Mike Bertino, City CFO. I consult the mayor and the council on financial matters, and I did look at all three proposals, and I do concur with the selection. They have a building in my town, it's very well sought after, same type of building. It went, I went to school there, you know, 40 years ago. You know, old three or four-story building with asbestos that was converted, and it's a very well settled, sought after. Also, I just want everybody to understand, since it's in the school's possession, when we spend money on that building for anything, to repair anything, to keep it safe, it comes out of the school budget, and it has been for all these years. So, I have never experienced anybody, any district willing to take on that expense for such a large building, and I just want everybody to know that. It comes out of what we call an S account, which is held on the city side on behalf of the school. But as soon as it's released, then it becomes a city issue, and in this case, it would become the developer's issue. So I just want to make sure everybody's, everybody's clear with that. I know it's been sitting for over five years, and that, that adds up. I don't even want to think about how much money we spent, because I like to, you know, put good money after good money, and not into something that's, you know, in this condition. Thank you.
Well, this is something that, that I advocated, I'm sorry, Jim.
Member Ford, you ever, and I know Mr. Satterwhite then has a question, but, member Ford.
I just, this is something I've advocated for since the beginning, with senior housing. You know, you, you know, you address the fact that senior housing's a shortage in the city, and we definitely do not need any more students, so we didn't need, you know, we were overcrowded. definitely do not need any more students, so we didn't need, you know, we're overcrowded as it is, so I thought senior housing was what we needed, and I think this is a great move. I got one quick question. 55 or 62?
I believe it was 55.
I believe so.
Okay, I thought you said, okay, that's what I got here. All right, before Mr. Sadowite, Ms. Lamanna.
I just wanted to add, this is the third time the RFP has gone out. The first two times, there were non-responsive bids, so I'm pleased that in this RFP, there was no minimum bid and there was no timeline for closing. So, all five of these are before you. I do want to stress, from a legal standpoint, it is entirely up to this school committee how to proceed. If you choose not to sell it, then it cannot be sold by the city council over your objection. So, I just wanted to reiterate that point.
Member Sadowite.
Thank you. And just to put it out there, obviously, today, we were getting an update, so I'm not expected to vote on this, but I do have some questions, and ultimately, I'd like to hear directly from those that plan on doing the work. But this, and I believe all of the RFPs relied on the low-income housing tax credit, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So, how is it that they're shovel-ready while the others aren't if they're all relying on the same funding?
Because they have the, you know, they put in their bid that it could take up to a year and a half to get financing for the construction, but they have the financial wherewithal to begin construction with their own money.
But they're relying on that tax credit, and if all else fails, they're going to spend their own money, it sounds like.
The tax credit they're relying on is a tax credit on the building, not from the city.
I understand that, yeah. And then I have some questions with regards to the AMI that they're presenting. I know, we're talking about housing for our seniors, and there's a waitlist for 500 at Kings Beach. How are we to say that they're going to qualify for the AMI that's at this building?
I believe, you got a copy, correct?
Yeah.
I think everybody got a copy. I think that was spelled out there, it was also said that half of them would be, I believe, at the...
60 and 30.
The six, I think it was 30 and 60, half at 30, half at 60.
And this is probably the only RFP that was presented that didn't have specifics as to hiring any type of Lin contractors or Lin businesses, any discussions about wages or benefits for those that are working on this particular site. So, I think it's important for those to be asked and answered as well.
Well, that wasn't part of the RFP.
We don't really have the authority to...
But it's still good to know what they're proposing to do, right?
They are a nonprofit, and from what I understand, they do use labor. And we actually have a Lin company who I would advocate for, who happens to be right down the street, who has done a lot of school projects, including the college, St. Mary's, some work in East Boston, so they might already be in tune with that company.
And is there any, I know, I didn't see any within there, but are there any discussions with bringing any sort of amenities for the community, like a park or something that could be used specifically by the community that they're looking to build in?
Well, they've allocated a minimum of 5,000 square feet as a satellite senior service area, similar to...
Linfield Street.
Right, right. To not be the replacement for a senior center, but just a satellite location, maybe for people that live in that area, live in that complex.
What they also do is, they have a facility that's within the building, so that people can do rehab, seniors can do rehab, and it's not just open for the people that live in the building. They can use the facility for the rehab, they have doctors that come in, they have beauty parlor, the people that come in take care of, they provide services for seniors is what they do.
Thank you.
Member Gately.
Um...
And then, member Nicholson.
I was very pleased with the RFP for this company. I, too, had questions, and, you know, I literally said to people, read this RFP if you want to, to the seniors. I invited them to come in and read through that RFP. I got response. The minute you, the council approved the plan, someone from North Shore Labor came right out to Mr. Ford and myself, and he looked at us and said, "This is a great company, this is a great plan." So, I was very impressed with that. So, then I did more due diligence, and I talked to somebody, that's someone in the senior, senior action, they wanted me to talk to this person, and I called this person, and he was looking at another plan, he said that that plan really didn't use labor, so that this plan actually uses labor. So, that matters to me as a person that is part of a labor, you know, council, I'm in labor. So, I'm happy with this plan. You went out, and this time, you hit a home run, as far as I'm concerned. You literally found senior housing that will be appropriate and will use possibly labor, I don't know if it's in there, Justin will get back to me, but I think it's a good plan, and I think we should move forward with it. Thank you for your due diligence.
Thank you for doing the research.
Member Nicholson. And then, member Castellanos.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, councilors Seer and Staubert for being here, Attorney Lamanna and Mr. Bertino for the presentation. I absolutely agree, there's a huge need for senior housing, and think you described it in the right way, and, you know, I'm definitely glad that we have the responsive RFP, and am inclined to support a project like this that checks those boxes. You know, I also have questions as well. You know, one of the things, you mentioned that the hiring wasn't part of the RFP, is there an opportunity to think about, to get some, to ask them sort of about their plans and get like an update on that, and particularly, you know, from the school's perspective, if they'd be willing to, you know, be open to collaborations with LinTech, and trying to, you know, feed into the pipeline of apprenticeship and sort of, you know, it's school property originally, and making that connection to the Lin Public Schools.
I mean, I would imagine it's something that they would be open to. They started as a community organization, you know, they're located in East Boston, the majority of their projects are in East Boston, so they're a very community-based group. So, I would imagine that that's something that could be done.
Great, yeah. No, it'd be great to get that.
Member Castellanos.
Just want to say thank you for, you know, coming out tonight, really going over this, you know, this process with us, and to see that you guys are back at the table and everyone who was part of that process. I, myself, I did have Terry Young and Counselor Staubert reach out, I reached out to get more information about this group, which I was provided in a timely fashion, I want to say thank you for that. I had my opportunity to review the logistics and reach out to my contacts and do my due diligence. Part of that was reach out to public safety and understand the liabilities involved with that. As we talked before, Mr. Bertino, there were some liabilities involved financially, fiscally, to have that, you know, that type of fiscal saturation impact us, it does resonate. There's the feature of addressing senior housing. Thank you, Councilor Seer, for canvassing those neighborhood. I think getting the people's perspective who actually are impacted by that, around that area is vital. And I do know, I have constituents who are on that waiting list, who do speak with me, and I do empathize with those folks who are on the breach of homelessness, to have, you know, the folks who worked for the city and been around this city to have to face that type of crisis. It's really concerning to me to look, you know, out of the box, you know, this is, again, as Attorney Lamanna said, this has been a big, this has been a while since we finally got to a point, this point. In the developer itself, I believe, the East Boston group had done some more due diligence and really went into some of the work. I would have loved to take a tour and to accept that opportunity to really, to really go one-on-one, to meet with folks, right, and to see how they're going to be in my city, is where I grew up. So, I would like to really accept that. And to, just to cap it off, I do appreciate the transparency with the process and just the constant communication, have everyone, you know, as member Coppola, Ford, and also this, member Gately, were part of that process, and they were very, it was just a very, and I do understand, Mr. Bertino, I know you've never heard of a city, you know, sitting on this, but I just want to reiterate that, you know, overcrowding piece, and we've been in a really desperate spot with land as well. So, it's, we've been, this is a tight spot for us, so when we let go of these type of properties, and we have to really conduct a full analysis, and sometimes these processes take a little bit longer, but with, you know, I'm glad that we waited this long. As you see, we had more of a result than the previous times, so, thank you.
Member Coppola.
I think we should move forward. I don't know why there wouldn't be a motion that we could do this evening even to move it forward, because what we had put out, and what Mr. Ford had suggested, was what we all kind of agreed with, was that senior housing was the way to go. And if we wanted those other things in there, we should have put them in at that time, but we didn't, so, you know, I have no problem with moving forward, just so that we can, because it's been a long process, and it's not a good location, we talked about that before, for putting a school there.
Member Sadowite.
If I can just respond to that, the agenda says an update on the old Marshall Middle School property, not a vote on the old Marshall Middle School property, so I think that'd be a disservice to the residents of Lin. I think that our agenda should reflect as to what we have in mind, so people, it can participate in that. It just says update. So, I don't agree that we should move it forward.
Member Ford.
I agree with Mr. Coppola, and I think that, you know, we've hashed this out long enough, you know, our ultimate goal was senior housing, if we're going to get senior housing, that was what we were after, and I think that to spend additional funding would be inappropriate to, we've spent enough on the city side. I'm sad, I'm satisfied with this. I'd be willing to move forward with the vote.
Member Gately.
I'd be willing to move forward with this vote also. I think that leaving that property sitting there and having to pay more money when, you know, we have other things to look into, you know. You know, we're in negotiations for our teachers, everything's going on, and we're going to throw, you know, money away. So, I think we should make a motion and accept it, because five and a half years is a long time to wait on this property, and I know the seniors are going to love it.
Member Nicholson.
Thank you, yeah. I mean, I understand that the vote that is required from the school committee to, once we make that vote, that we will no longer be formally involved in the process, but if we were to move forward, would you be able to commit to returning to us and reporting on these follow-up questions that we had for East Boston about their commitment to local hiring, their commitment to working with LinTech and setting up apprenticeships? You know, I think another question would be around sort of the, how they're going to set up the preferences for seniors to make sure that we're giving our Lin residents the highest order of preference that we can, but particularly around, you know, with respect to the school connection, that relationship with LinTech and the focus on local hiring, and, you know, making the commitment to sort of talk to local labor, organize labor, and to really make sure that there's a seat at that table.
Right. Well, it seems that they used organized labor anyway, as part of their practice. You know, we can certainly ask them the questions, we can, you know, even, you know, have you guys, like I said, tour the properties and all, but I can't guarantee what their answers are going to be. You know, it wasn't in the RFP. They submitted their bid, as did everyone else, based on the RFP that we put out, you know, and again, I think that they will use organized labor, because from what I understand, it's their past practice. As far as local, I would imagine they've got a lot of local contractors that they use because they're, you know, basically, their business is East Boston, Winthrop, and this general area. And like I said, we also have a company that specializes in school buildings, that if they forget a hammer, they can literally run down the street and grab it. That's how close they are to this site, so, you know, we can certainly ask those questions, but I can't guarantee what the answers are going to be, but their bid matched our RFP.
Consulor Seer.
If I could add to that?
Yeah, go ahead.
I met with the competitors' union on that site, made them aware of the RFP, made them aware that we were putting out the bid, and they're familiar with this company that responded and won the bid. So, they said they can be competitive, and this company, I know, will allow them the opportunity to come in and be competitive in the bidding process in building this. And the real issue here is that this has been going on for many years, it's costing the city money. We're also looking at getting $2.5 million, which we can use in the pickering bill though. So, this is money that, as Counselor Staubert was saying, it's a turnaround for the city of over $10 million because of what the cost would be to tear the building down. I don't even, I can't even imagine what the cost has been up to this point to secure the building, to maintain it, to have police and fire responding on it, I can say this, on daily basis, not just weekly, it's becoming a burden on the city. Once the building was torn down, the cafeteria side of it, we have cars that are going in there at nighttime, and they're spinning tires, we have bikes on malt beds, and neighborhood kids that are hanging around. We've got to do something about it, and we just keep kicking the can down the road, down the road, and, well, literally wasting time, to be honest. I just, I think that there's been enough information given to everybody, this process has gone on for a real long time, and I just feel as though that you should be able to have enough information. You know, we're partners here, we truly are, and we tried to make it as transparent and open as we possibly can. I know over the years of discussion, there's been a lot of, you know, headbutting, but I think we've finally come up with something that at least the majority of us can agree is a good project. So, I'm urging the school committee vote on this, and let's just get this thing going. Thank you.
Consulor Staubert, and then, member Sadowite has a question after that.
I would just like to add that, you know, throughout this process, there were times where we weren't sure we were going to generate any money from this, and it was going to continually cost us money. You know, as I said earlier, upwards of $8 million to tear that building down, and now with an offer of $2.5 million to Mr. Castellanos' point of us being land poor, you know, that is money that we can use towards land acquisition, and as we all know, land acquisition is not a reimbursable expense through the MSBA. So, you know, that's a little chunk of change, you know, whether it's for pickering, or I think we all agree that, you know, we can't just settle on pickering, it's pickering plus, and we're going to need other locations as well. So, you know, that's a little bit of money that, at one point, we didn't even know if we were going to get, that we could use towards those costs.
Member Sadowite, then, member Coppola.
Thank you. And again, just to reiterate, when I talked about the low-income housing tax credit, you said that they said it's going to be about a year and a half, right?
They said, in their words, "In our experience indicates it will take at least 18 months to achieve a construction loan closing. We have the proven financial capability to support the building during this time."
Okay. Thank you. Member Coppola.
To another thing is, the state gave us money, and I think they only gave us about $3 million to tear the building down, and as you say, it's $8 million, so even if we, you know, we decide to tear it down and use it... you know, we decide to tear it down and use it, we're still behind, you know, $5 million. So we do have that when you're adding up the money.
I thought we asked about that money. We, they used that money.
What did we spend? We've already spent $4 million, correct, on tearing down the cafeteria?
I believe we exhausted all the state money through the demolition of the newer section.
But we had it to use. We had it to use and we did use it.
Yeah, it was in the, uh, in the Marshall.
Yeah.
Nobody foresaw that there was going to be as much asbestos in the building. Nobody realized that the third floor, that in between the third floor and the second floor, there was a four-foot gap. The old roof was asbestos. The insulation they used was asbestos. And then all in the building was asbestos. In the walls, the concrete has asbestos hair in. So here you have a company that does this, has done it in other cities, especially in Boston, where they've gone in, taken these old buildings, used the tax credits, encapsulate the asbestos that's in there to make it safe. If we have to tear the building down, that's where the cost is. That's where the money is, is, is abating the asbestos that's in there. We just don't have the money in our budget to do that. I wish we did.
And they've agreed to tear the building down, right?
Correct.
What do you mean, they've agreed to keep the?
I have to take a motion.
You mean they've agreed to keep the building up?
Well, it's not, it's going to avoid the cost of tearing the building down.
Right.
Mr. Capola, you want to make a comment?
Other questions?
Um, I just want to
Yes, Member Capola.
Make me clarify. Attorney Sadowite, he felt as though, um, how the wording was on this under new business, um, that a motion couldn't be made. So I'm just asking for clarification. I feel as though a motion can be made, but, um, you know, I'm asking for an attorney to give me an answer. Looking to one, and over there.
Uh, uh,
Yes.
Attorney, uh,
The city council, I always said that the city council could, it's been, it put on the agenda. The public knows it's up for discussion. It wasn't advertised that there was a public hearing in any way. There's no requirement to have a public hearing. The school committee, as I indicated earlier, still has all the power and they choose to have a public hearing. In the future days, they could do that. Take the counselor, uh, Staubert and Counsel Seiya's point. The public has been involved in this process for the past five and a half years in some way or another. But again, it's entirely up to the school committee how they want to proceed.
Thank you, Attorney Lamanna.
I'd like to make a motion that, uh, Marshall Middle School be turned over to the city. Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Requires a roll call.
Roll call.
Mr. Castellanos.
Yes.
Ms. Capola.
Yes.
Mr. Ford.
Yes.
Ms. Gailey.
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson.
Yes.
Mr. Sadowite.
No.
Mayor McGee.
Yes.
I'll thank the school committee. Thank you very much. I'm a president of a lot of pretty things.
Counsel Seiya, thank you for your presentation tonight.
Especially Mrs. Capola, Mr. Ford, Ms. Gailey for reading through.
Yeah.
You probably had to have your eyes checked after.
I, I also had a chance to go through all of the, uh, all of the, um,
Did, did they change your prescriptions?
And they were, you know, and the, the interesting thing, and I'll just make a comment on it, it was very similar in terms of the financing. Uh, they were all really, um, I think upfront and good companies, uh, but the financing and the pieces of, all of the proposals really kind of mirrored each other, I think for the most part. They were very similar in, in terms at least how the financing and the historic tax credits as well as the low-income tax credit. So
Thank you.
Was, was a lot of reading, but it was, uh, it was good to see, uh, uh, the different companies come in and, you know, one of them is working up at Union Hospital to, to create a great project up there. So, uh,
Right. This is, this is a great, great time for our seniors to, we're finally creating some new affordable senior housing and hopefully, um, with the new senior center, um, you know, we're, we're really doing some good things for our seniors in Lynn.
Any applications with you?
When I hear over $55, wait a minute. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Next on the agenda is the athletic salary update from Mr. Gary.
Hi, everybody.
Welcome.
Hi. If you remember, I think it was last spring that the committee in discussion talked about revisiting some of the salaries of the coaches, and I would definitely say, um, deservedly so. Um, what my goal was for this meeting coming forward towards you is to hopefully arm the committee with some data to take a look at and see how we compare to other districts in our salary structure. And then I did go ahead and, um, come up with a proposal and it's just that, um, as a starting point to hopefully give our athletic coaches a little increased compensation. If you take a look, you should have two, um, documents in front of you, two three-page documents. The first one takes a look at the current head coaching and assistant coaching salaries of Lynn, along with eight other school districts. And the districts as a sample size that I just came up with were, um, some neighboring communities, Lynnfield, Swampsket, Wakefield, um, two of the communities in the Lynn Tech League, the Commonwealth Conference, which is Essex Tech and Greater Lowell. And then the other three districts are some of our new colleagues in the Greater Boston League, Revere, um, Medford and Somerville. So just as an idea, those are the other communities that you see on your document right in front of you. Um, the sample size that we took a look at, that the other community shared with us were, were seven sports that I gave you as a sample size. It's not all of them. They didn't share all of them with us, but I think it's a pretty good sample size for you to take a look at. The first document that you have in yellow, if you want to take a look, um, through the sports, you can see that the head, the first column's the head coaching salary for each sport. And then the second column, if you take a look at it, is the average assistant coaching salary for each sport. And obviously, what I mean by average assistant coaching salary, let's say in football, a district has six assistant coaches on the staff, it would be the average of all six of those, um, assistant coaching positions. And in the document, like I said, I highlighted them in yellow. I would say we're in the middle, maybe a little bit towards the bottom in the sample size that, that we used, or that, I should say, that, that we came up with here. Um, and in the, the next document, the one that you'd see highlighted in green, that's the one, that's the document that I made adding the proposed salary addition. And you can see where we landed on that. Um, the salary addition that I came up with would be a $1,200 increase for each of our head coaches at each of the three, at Lynn Tech, um, Classical and English. And it would be an $800 increase for each of our assistant coaches across the board. And again, there you can see in the, in the second document that's highlighted in green, that's where we land with the proposed additions. And I was excited to see that, that in most of them, we land near towards the top when you, when you factor in the, the proposed, uh, increases that I put forward towards you right there.
Uh, Member, Sadowite, then Member Ford.
Uh, you said $800 across the board for the assistants, but for the golf, it looks like it's 16.
Good point. So for the golf, if you take a look at the golf, that would be the third sport on each of your lists. The third sport on each of your lists, if you take a look, the golf is one that we took a look at that is really low compared to the other communities. That would be the only sport, and, and we talked about it, that we felt needed even a little bit more of an increase. Instead of the $1,000, the proposal would be to go up $2,000. I'm sorry, instead of the 1,200, the proposal would to be to go up, um, even more than that with the head coaches and with the assistant coaches. And if you take a look at the green sheet, even at that, it gets it right in the middle. So golf is the one sport that we proposed a little bit more of an increase, just to get us a little bit more in the ballpark with the other districts on the list.
And for football, it looks like, um, uh, Lynn would actually tie with Greater Lowell because on the old sheet, it says that they pay $10,006.97, but on the new sheet, it says 695.
Right. And, and, and again, a lot of, um, which one are you looking at? The green one?
So if you look at the yellow one,
Yep.
It says that Greater Lowell is $10,006.97, but then on the green one, it says 695, but it matches Lynn.
Right. So that actually would, that actually would get us up. It, it should be the old one there. So that would have got us ahead of Greater Lowell on that one for the football one.
And, um, did you ask about participation in each one of these programs? How many kids?
So participation is difficult. We have the participation, um, totals for each of our programs. As far as the participation totals for the ones that we surveyed, that would be where you have the differing number of assistant coaches, obviously for, even for some of our schools, if you look at track and cross-country, for whatever reason, some Lynn Tech always has a high number of, um, participation for those sports as opposed to others, other schools in our district which don't. So we take a look at, when we come up with our assistant coaching number of positions, we, we take a look at the enrollment.
Is track on there?
Track's not on there. That's one of the sports, you know, that's one of the sports that some of the other communities didn't share. Just to give you an idea, most of the other sports that aren't on there are in line with the baseball and the softball totals. So again, there's, like I said, there's a lot of data in there. After taking a look at it, what I felt was a fair increase or, you know, to propose to you guys would be that 800 and 1,200 dollar increase. And like I said, there's a ton of variables that you can take a look at. Um, but I felt like that would be, that would be one that would bring us up.
Uh, thank you. Member Ford and then Member Castellanos.
Um, just a quick question. We discussed this today. Um, like football and basketball, the number of assistant coaches is finite. There's, what do we allow for?
So the sports that we have, the, the football, the baseball, I'm sorry, the basketball, baseball, ones that traditionally have the set amount of players on each team, um, we have, it, well, varies by different sports. We have a set number of coaches. Like I said, the ones for track, that kind of the, the track or cross-country, the ones that differ for each sport, that's where you might see different totals of assistants at different schools. And we base that on participation.
So if you add, for example, we talked about, like basketball, if you add
Sure. It's, it's uniform.
Six coaches at English versus three at Classical, you don't pay $800 for each one of the ones at English.
No.
You, you have a cap.
We have set, we have set, we have set totals for each one. So for each sport, there's a designated number of assistant coaching positions.
We corrected that two, three years ago. Um, Mike and I, with the three A.D.s, we unified how many assistant coaches each high school could have for each sport, based on the number of players and all of that. Because we were having problems with, some had eight assistant coaches while others had three. So we unified that a few years back and that we've pretty much stuck to it.
Well, we had, Mike and I discussed it pretty much today and I just
Right.
Wanted information to get out to the rest of the committee to
And again, the, the reason for that, that we try not to let the head coaches split up the pool of money in a lot of different ways for assistant coaches, we just didn't think it's right for an assistant coach with all the work they have to just make $800 or $900 when you split it up too many ways. And that's the thinking behind it.
Member Castellanos.
Thank you, um, Mr. Gary for, for bringing this to, um, our forefront. So could you explain the product, just the figure process? How, how did you come up with the figures, the increases? Could you, like, how did that, did you just meet with your A.D.s? How did that process?
See, it was a talk with them and we said, listen, let's take a look at the, how we compared other communities. We really hadn't done this exercise before. And like you can see in the yellow, we were in the middle or towards the bottom. Um, and we took a look at what would be kind of a fair increase that we could come up with. It is a significant number when you add all of it up with the amount of assistants and head coaches that we have. Um, we wanted a number that we felt was good enough, but a, you know, fair enough number that we could hopefully fit within the budget.
Well, my question is, was, Mr. McQ, I know you've talked about, so Mr. McQ, what was your part in this?
Actually, I, Michael handled most of this and I just, he ran it by me. I mean, the last time we adjusted these salaries was 2016. So just to put it in perspective. So, uh, we were talking about, you know, where this should be in line and the conversation's consistently been, you know, if we, we are low, then we need to get them closer to the top. And I think this is a good chance to have that evaluation. And they went through the process with the athletic directors and Ms. Roggerio to go through this, uh, process. And they asked me if what I thought, and I think it's fair. I think we're getting us where we need to be. And, and the one case was like the golf, they said, that's completely out of line. We got to kind of give that a little bit of a bump. And I said, I think it's the right thing to do.
We had a variety amount of amounts that we played around with. Um, and I went to Kevin multiple times and said, oh, what do you think of this number? We'd like to see this. Does that work? Could we do this? So it, I mean, Kevin was part of it in terms of us bouncing ideas off with him so that we were trying to stay within the budget. Um, but we all acknowledged that the coaches have not had an increase in a long time and it's, it's needed.
Thank you. I also want to just ask about, so I know, I know across the board, we have fixed, um, you know, assistant coaches and numbers fixed. Volunteering, what's the policy? Why can't we have coaches, because when you look at the, like the youth league, you look at the value of, even you got college kids coming back who want to, uh, we have a strong, like, just alumni network who want to come back and volunteer. Cause I feel like that could offset costs too. Like, why are we, like, there's other, is this by policy? Does he, I just need to, I don't know if it's?
So I think the, the thinking behind that is we can't just have anybody come back from, say, college or recent grad, show up on the field for quarries and things like that. We need to have them down here and go through, um, the H.R. process. The other piece of that, I think that we've found is that head coaches, it's tough for them to manage the coaches if there's 12 or 13 assistant coaches underneath them. So we kind of take it by a
The other piece to that is that the players lose sight of who's really in charge. There's too many voices, too many opinions, too many people involved. I, I'm all for volunteering. I volunteered in youth sports myself. But when you're trying to organize players on a team and you have a head coach and assistants who are, have like certain responsibilities, it gets hard when there's too many voices.
So I, I disagree. I think we have to have a, I think there's a, there's a number, there's a, there should be a volunteer option. Again, it goes back to, um, we have, I spoke with the head coaches, I've put plenty of coaches that, you know, this is, this came, this came about because I've, I did my due diligence to reach out further deeper. Um, because if we're looking to, you know, there's, there's a process where, you know, going through that hiring process, going through H.R., like you said, there's a value to that. Um, and that's a great, that's great. I coached football for Boston English, uh, Jamaica Plain. They had a, it was all volunteer-based. I went through that process with Boston Public Schools. Um, and that was a, a really great experience. Um, again, that introduced me to, you know, what that could have been about. You know, there was other things I learned about. And I think that option should be, uh, if it's not, so for me, if it's not a overlying bigger policy or a wall, and if it's just the more work piece, I have to disagree with that. I think we need to actually, as a matter of fact, if we had more vol, there's a lot more people who are willing to do the, the volunteer work, then we don't have to, we, we, we could look at the, the monetary, but we have to explore those options too because that's like a co-op. That's a, that's an experience, an internship. So, um, high school sports in Lynn, it's, it's growing. Uh, it's always been. There's a, there's alumni, there's history, there's, there's the love for the game in these many sports that people want to have an opportunity. So I think have, I think I, I understand what, uh, I apologize. I don't mean to come off like I'm just super, like, I, I just want to say, there's ways to contain and manage volunteers. And our, if, if, if we're saying we're going to increase, like, any type of monetary salary, there needs to be another feature, hey, if, if that's the case, here's another feature. Cause if, we should be able to be, our head coaches should be able to manage volunteers or manage an additional surplus. And, you know, and ultimately we give another mentor, another outlet for our, our student athletes.
Member Gailey.
Um, one of the things, listening to, uh, Mr. Castellanos, um, I'm reminded of safeties. Um, and the safety of our students, we need all the volunteers to be quarried because if they're not quarried, you know that, if they're not quarried, how, how do we know they're going to be safe with our students? Um, that's all I wanted to input was the safety issue. You know, I don't, you know, it's like, I'm glad to see this. I am, I, I, all the hours, because I was a coach, I was one of those assistant coaches for basketball, all the hours that you put in. You know, I don't, you know, it's like, I'm glad to see this. I am, I, I- All the hours, cause I was a coach, I was one of those assistant coaches for basketball, all the hours that you put in, and then if you get into, um, the tournament, and that's your big goal, then you, you know, like, you're, the hours after hours that you put in. But I, I think they needed this raise. That's why it was brought up. That's why we decide, discussed it. I don't mind having volunteers, as long as they're quarried and they're supervised. Um, I think back to a friend of mine who had a, um, daughter in a soccer camp, and this summer, in the soccer camp, um, had students, but they weren't being supervised very well, and the daughter had a very horrible experience just because, um, the boys in the soccer camp were swearing, they were doing this, they were doing that. And, and the person in charge didn't have enough hands to take care of the volunteers. So, i- it's really safety for me with, with the, um, volunteers. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Superintendent, Dr. Tutwiler.
Yeah, I'll just say that, uh, or admit, rather, that this is a new sort of wrinkle for me. I, I was not aware of, um, you know, the, the challenges around, or concerns around volunteers. And what I'd recommend is, uh, the opportunity to understand it more deeply with, uh, the A.D.s, with coaches, and come back, I can add it to a superintendent's report or make it an agenda item.
Can I just clarify one thing? That was during a summer camp. It was, had nothing to do with Lynn Public Schools. I just want you to know that. It was a summer camp.
Member Castellanos.
I, I do, uh, I would like to, so, I, I have it as an agenda item. I would, I would entertain, uh, I, it'll give us more time too. Like, I could reach out with the other sports as well, uh, being on the Subcommittee for Athletics. It'll give me time to really do more due diligence on just, again, going through what we just discussed in terms of what that logistically will look like, like, what number, how many volunteers, and what the, and like, what the, what that looks like, and how that, you know, how would that, again, going back around safety, um, I think that's mandatory. I think anybody who's dealing with children, uh, quarry checks, um, and just doing the due process to protect our students as, as much as possible, so.
Member Sadowite.
Uh, this question is more geared towards, uh, Mr. McHugh. Uh, when would these go into effect, and, um, what's the, the cost of the district? And do we have to do anything with the budget?
Well, as far as the, the implementation would be up to the school committee. We could start them, sports just started, so we could make them start immediately right, right now. Um, or you have the option to delay. That's obviously a thing. Uh, as far as the total cost, I think Mike Gary ran all the numbers, and he came up with like about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars would be the total cost across the board for all three seasons, all schools. Uh, as far as the budget impact, we would look at it, any salary savings that we're having right now that use to offset these additional costs.
Cause it's from the same, um, uh, budget. This is from the same pool of money?
It would be within the same salary section and any savings we've been having. So, we would just utilize those to offset this cost. So, we would, we would need a motion of the school committee to determine when they start going to effect. Would probably be the, the biggest thing.
Um, Member Capola, and I just, I just think, I'd just like to reiterate, I think, or follow up on what Dr. Tutwiler said. I think this is, addressing this piece is important tonight, and then we can talk and, and have much more discussion on the, on the volunteers, how that works, whether, how it would fit into the current structure and all of that, and get more information. I think it'd be important for us to do that in the future, but I think what's before us is an opportunity to, to take this on. Uh, Member Capola.
I do think that that's a separate issue. So, I'd like to make a motion that, um, the head in assisting coaching salaries be, um, go into effect immediately.
Second.
So, be, um, accept them and that they go into-
Accept them, right.
Accept them and go into, immediately?
As presented.
Right. As presented, as presented.
Thank you. And there's a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Castellanos.
Yes.
Ms. Capola. Yes. Mr. Ford.
Yes.
Ms. Gately.
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson.
Yes.
Mr. Sadowite.
Yes.
Mayor McGee.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Gary.
Good work. Thanks, thanks for all the research on this.
You got it.
Thank you for doing that. Next on the agenda, uh, Member Gately.
Yes, over the summer, I had someone come to me, um, about, um, administrator's survey. Um, surveying the administrators, and, um, we sat down and collaborated and wrote out these questions that I gave to all the school committee. And then I put it into a Google form, and I sent a copy of it to Dr. Tutwiler. I sent a copy to, um, uh, the administrators' union president, and I sent a copy to Attorney Sadowite, um, who's in charge of negotiations. I just feel, and then I got a letter, um, this week, that I, I discussed with Dr. Tutwiler earlier. And, um, and I just think that there's a need of people that are working in the administration to be able to talk about the leadership that they are receiving. Um, are they being listened to? So, that's all this is, and I just wanted some approval so that we could have the survey go out to administrators. And Dr. Tutwiler was mentioning another way to do it. The only thing I really want it to be is in a Google Doc that goes directly to you, Dr. Tutwiler. Because when you do a survey in Google Doc, um, as soon as the person answers it, you get all the answers, you know? So, that, that's why I brought it on there. It was brought to my attention. A lot of people are feeling very discouraged. Um, and I just, you know, you don't know. You don't know if it's for real or if it's not. And this is the way you find out. Is, is this really an issue? And do we need to improve some performances? Um, that's all.
Dr. Tutwiler.
Yeah, so, um, I, I think, uh, everyone in this room has heard me say with the utmost sincerity that, uh, I embrace welcome, uh, learn and grow from feedback. Uh, and sometimes it is, uh, you know, in the moment, I'll ask folks, you know, what do you think about, uh, this, or how, you know, how did you experience that? And sometimes it's more formal. Uh, and so, I think I need to say that in the outset. And so, the spirit of what you're talking about, I have, I'm, I'm, I'm in line with. I think there are some pieces of it, um, that, um, I, I, I think should be slightly different. And so, the, the, you know, what this is missing, and I appreciate the, uh, sort of opening that you gave for it, but what it's missing is a why statement. What's the purpose? What is it that, uh, one hopes to learn or know by virtue of offering this survey? Uh, and, uh, the other piece is, um, this is about the L.P.S. senior leadership team, which, by the way, we've changed our name to the executive leadership team cause senior has a paternalistic thing that I don't like. Uh, and so, uh, but, but it's about that sort of piece of the organization. And, uh, and I think, and speaking, if I may say so, uh, with Member Gately, the idea was to survey members of the Lynn School Administrators Association. Um, i- i- I, I think what I'd like to ask you to do is to task me to come up with a way to collect that feedback, but I'd like for it not to be about the executive leadership team, cause they're a reflection of my leadership. Uh, I think it needs to be about me. Uh, and if people feel challenged or a lack of communication, uh, somewhere, that's a reflection of my leadership, something that I haven't emphasized, something that I haven't addressed. Uh, this body supervises me. If you're going to, if you want a survey to happen, I think it should be about me. I supervise the members of the, uh, executive leadership team. And so, if there's a challenge related to the work that they're doing or an area in need of improvement, I think that's something that I need to take on. Uh, and I feel like that's in my purview. Uh, and so, uh, I am more than happy to, um, take this as a foundational piece, go to my little lab, uh, and come up with something and present it to you as a means to gather feedback. I think we'd also kind of want to be clear about the why, because the, you know, and I love them all dearly, but the members of the Lynn School Administrators Association, that's a very diverse group of people. We're talking guidance counselors, department heads, program specialists, assistant directors, school psychologists, some people that members of the, um, uh, executive leadership team don't necessarily interface with directly. Uh, but, uh, maybe they feel their leadership in a different way. But I think I'd like to come up with something, a way to get a sense for how me and my team, um, how people are experiencing our, our leadership. Um, I, that's feedback that I would, uh, happily, um, entertain.
Well, in that letter that I read to you, that I got, um, there is like some problems with people not being able to express themselves. That, um, the executive leadership department, whatever. Um, it was mentioned that they're elitist in it. And I just, some people, not all people feel that way. Um, there are some, and they expressed that there are very good people down in the ad building. Um, but they just really wanted this to be done. So, um, and, and to be done privately so that it's like a message from them to you and just you. So, you can see how other people are viewing their performance, and that is the most important thing. Cause they, in that letter also, it expressed how delightful you are, how happy you are, and how great you are to, to, um, interact with on a daily basis. But that's not the same for everybody. And that was the, that's why this came about this summer. Because a lot of people are feeling that way, and I think it needs to be addressed.
I'll just respond to that really quickly before.
Dr. Tutwiler, please.
Can I cut the line? I still see that as a reflection of my leadership, right? If there are members of my team who are not channeling the same kind of energy that we collectively should be channeling, that's a refle-, that's on me. Uh, and so, I'm happy to, to, to gather that feedback. I think it should be, if you just give me some time, I, I will propose something. And if it doesn't fit with your liking, I mean, I can go back. But I'm saying foundationally, um, that the idea around feedback, I, I'm on board with one hundred percent. Uh, I think there needs to be a very clear, you know, purpose, statement of purpose. And then we need to be very intentional about who we're asking about, uh, or asking, uh, for feedback from. Uh, but I think I can come up with something that, that gets at this. But ultimately, I think it, that all of that is a reflection of my ability to make sure that, um, everyone is channeling that same energy.
I think with certain pieces of clarification, it might, um, you, you might not be so far apart in, in what your desires are. Is your intention for Dr. Tutwiler to get the information and keep the information? Or do you expect him to share it with us?
Um.
Cause you're saying it's gonna go directly to him. If it goes directly to him, it could change everything.
Change everything?
I'm just saying, it, it could change the way he feels about what the information is gonna be used about, for. If he's just getting the information and it's talking about his executive leadership team, and he's the only one that's gonna use it, um, then it might change that, that thought process. So, cause if, if you're presenting this for this information to go to him and then to go to us, that's very different than if it's just gonna go to him and stay with him, and he uses it the way he desires to use it. What is your, what is your hope with the information?
I just want him to get the feedback.
So, it's, it's going directly to you.
Uh, Member Nicholson.
Yeah, I, I would just, uh, say that, um, you know, I think that there's the, it sounds like, you know, I agree with Dr. Tutwiler that this is, it's in his prerogative. I think it's important feedback that, that Member Gately has, has shared. And I think, um, you know, that it sounds like there's a, there, i- i- if, if we're gonna go the route of having Dr. Tutwiler draft a survey, uh, maybe we can make sure that there, there's particular questions that get at specifically the, the topic of, of your supervision of the executive leadership team, right? So, you'll have to draft the questions with that in mind. So, it, you know, we, we, and, and it might take a couple of questions, right? So, it's not gonna just be, you know, I would imagine it's not gonna just be in a value, like, a, the kind of, a value, a performance survey that you would do, um, you know, based on your superintendent's goals or whatever. But it's like, there, there's like a couple of these particular issues that get at the heart of what you just said, which is if, if there's issues, it's, it's, it's on, uh, under your, your prerogative, but, you know, so that, that'll have to make its way into the questions, I would think. Um, and the other thing about the, um, the breadth of the administrators' union, the, the audience, um, you know, I mean, I think that, that is often the case with surveys, that sometimes the, the audience is broader than the, um, and, and one way to sort of tactically address that is to have the option of, you know, we don't have the experience to, to answer this question. Yeah.
So, I, I have a comment, then I'll go to Member Sadowite. I mean, I, I think as we're talking about this, I think, uh, I would feel strongly that Dr. Tutwiler have an opportunity to present back to us what you're proposing, Dr. Tutwiler, and we'll have a chance to review and accept, uh, uh, work together to find the, the direction that I think all of us want to go. So, I think what you proposed makes sense to me. And, uh, I think you'll be coming back to us with, uh, with, uh, what you have, I think, put on the table. And I think, as Member Sadowite said, um, you're both talking, I, Member Gately, and, and you were talking about doing something that in a lot of ways is aligned. So, I, I think to give you an opportunity to bring that back to us in the, in the very near future and, and continue this discussion. Member Sadowite?
And, and again, just to reiterate, we have individual contracts with those and the executive leadership team. And they specifically address as to who will be the one to address that performance, okay? So, that part is, is extremely important, uh, to, to not allow to fall at the wayside, okay? So, I understand where your mindset is, where, um, i- it might come into play with regards to that. But you're the one that we gave the authority to, to dictate what the performance review is gonna be, not us. And if we want to do something like this in the future to change that, that needs to be negotiated. So, um, a- again, if, if the information is going, um, directly to you, and it's not being shared with us, but it's a way for you to reflect on your administration, um, I, I think, again, that, that might bring you a little bit closer than how far apart I thought you were in the beginning. Thank you.
I think we'll, uh, at this point, we'll wait for, uh, feedback from you, Dr. Tutwiler, to allow us to continue this discussion, uh, one of the next, uh, meetings in the near future. Thank you, Member Gately.
Thank you.
Uh, Member Castellanos.
So, I want to say, uh, thank you to Dr. Tutwiler and everyone involved in just getting this on the agenda. Uh, this is a very, um, very important item, uh, you know, summer reading recommendation that I, I wanted to talk about was, um, a piece of literature. Um, it was produced by a individual who has went through a ma-, an amazing and inspiring journey, uh, the Khmer Rouge. Um, the journey of this individual really, it sounds like it needs to be a movie. Um, it left me, I read this literature from front to back, and I was left just in awe with the amount of, of just adversity of what this person went through. It's something that, um, is important to learn about. And I think the biggest feature and key to this is that this individual, um, is out here in Lynn. He's a living, breathing example. Um, when we talk about having an option for summer reading and to learn, to expand, and to find literature that really can inspire you for, for great things. I love reading. I love, I love literature. We were just at an event not too long ago to celebrate literature. And it's important to have that representation. And to, and, and not, this is just the start of it, cause there's a lot of talented people out there that come from the city. Um, and it's, it's, it's important to amplify their voices. And, uh, and I just, I, I, I didn't get to, um, so, I didn't want to know if, I, I don't know what exactly. I know there was the due process here, when we want to go, cause it's history. This is history that we're talking about. And I know we've talked about it, and I just want to put it out for discussion with my colleagues in terms of whatever due process that we have to go for and go through. Um, I fully support what we have to do, but I definitely want to make a recommendation for this, uh, piece of literature. That I, I, I'm not gonna put it out there, cause I don't think I, I'm just going through our process, cause I'm more, I, I did, I did, uh, speak with council before I came here. So, I definitely, um, I just want to put that out to the folks, my colleagues.
Member Sadowite, then Member Gately.
Yeah, I, I agree that, um, we're not in the, in the capacity to, to push a particular product on the committee, um, and I'm glad that you're being- And I'm glad that you're being very generalized, because it's important to stay compliant. But I think we've all read this piece of literature, and I know Dr. Tutwiler's in the process of reading it, and will be on an airplane doing so soon. So I appreciate you bringing that up and bringing it to the administrations aware of it now, and also Lorraine, and whomever else is on the
Curriculum.
Curriculum subcommittees now aware of it. So I just want to make sure we're careful as to what's discussed at this point.
Member Gailey.
I would like to recommend that this, this piece of literature be brought to curriculum. They can look at it, they can make the decision, you know, they would know where, you know, whether it's ELA or whether it's Humanities, the Assistant Curriculum Director would know the appropriate place for it to go, if we do decide to have it. But that's what I would recommend. Because it was a great read, it was an amazing story.
Member Ford?
Just to clarify a point, I spoke to Glenn Kucha of MASC today, and basically, he said that as long as we have the approval and the recommendation of the superintendent, we can legally vote to adopt this for summer reading. Not for a curriculum, but for summer reading.
Okay.
So we could push, if we can move, so, can I just clarify? Could we just?
Member Castellanos?
So, just after Member Ford, so we could forward that through a vote to support it? Is that where I just, is this?
Well, we need the recommendation of superintendent before we could vote on it, and he would have to read the book first, I'm sure.
No, no, I just wanted to clarify.
Member Sadowite?
Would this be the first time the school committee has recommended summer reading?
Since I've been here.
Uh huh. Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
You got to read the book.
Any other questions? I think as we've had this discussion, we'll continue this discussion moving forward, and I know Dr. Tutwiler read the book, and we can have further discussion, and we'll get more input, I think, from the superintendent, once you get a chance to read it, and take it from there. Thank you, Member Castellanos. Next on the agenda is a vote on the superintendent's goals. Dr. Tutwiler?
Yeah, so in your packets, there is a document that should look familiar. We discussed it in great detail in our meeting on the 19th. I think we spent a good two hours talking about the student learning goal and the district improvement goals, took copious notes on your feedback, suggestions, ideas. You know, and note, those are reflected in the tracked changes you can see as you look through the document. Most of them were stylistic or just wanting to reflect language in particular goals or key actions. And then on the very last page, which I think, you know, may be on the back of the very last page, is an entirely new district improvement goal on the recommendation of Member Nicholson to honor strategic objective number three, which was, is all about facilities improvement. You know, a big piece of that, obviously, is the opportunity that the city has before it with the Pickering Building Project. So I crafted a goal around that for your approval. Again, I just want to state that some parts of that are out of our control, but the parts that are within our control, I think it made a lot of sense to make a goal around it. And so, as you can see, this is on the back, it's in all in blue, because it's a brand new thing. Develop and present a community engagement and communication plan for the Pickering Middle School Building Project. And this is all about, I think, lessons learned from the previous project around community engagement, access to information, you know, ways for questions to get answered, where information is placed, when meetings happen, things of that nature. Really developing a plan so that the community, the entire community feels part of this process to the extent that they want to be, and can access information when they want, and can have questions answered, so forth and so on. And so, what I am tying to that goal, or the empirical indicator, is a fully executable engagement and communication plan that I would present to you at the close of the eligibility period, which is the first phase of the building MSBA's process, which ends at the end of January. So sometime before that, sort of laying out really clearly how in the next phase, which is the feasibility study, when you start putting your team together, owner's project manager, you know, the architect, things of that nature, going into that phase, having a really robust framework for how we're going to partner with the community in this process.
Member Sadowite?
I think it's important that while we're doing it differently this time, that we are careful to document what we're doing, and what we do right and what we do wrong. So in the future, we can have a live-in document that we can review. It's vital, because the last school we built was Marshall some time ago, and lots of things have changed since then. What is the key engagement opportunities that are specific in this key action? Can you be more specific?
TBD. I don't know. But the point would be to determine points at which we want to hold, whether it's a community forum or a webinar, what are the, what are the, the points at which it would be important to, you know, to stop and sort of update the community on what's going on, give them an opportunity to ask questions. That is something that would be determined over the upcoming months, you know, and spelled out in that plan. I think we, I mean, we have the fortunate reality of being right next door to a community where a new school, they're a little further down in the process. Swamp Scott, one of our principals is actually on their building committee. And so, I mean, we have resources to kind of think about, think carefully about what those engagement opportunities are, but this evening, I couldn't tell you.
And two and three seem pretty similar, a strategy, rhythm for our communication, and obviously, the appropriate platforms of communication. They seem to be, one without the other doesn't make any sense.
Well, the, 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 one is the, the how and the what, and the other is the on what, if that makes any sense. So like, what is the frequency? I mean, I could merge those two if it makes you feel better. But what is the frequency of communication? What kinds of things are being communicated? And then how? What vehicle are we using to communicate those things? I just differentiated them, but I'm okay.
And is that specific to the group of people that will have input? And then the key engagement opportunities are with the general public? Is that what separates those? Is my thought process on point, or a little off?
Um, is it, repeat that first part.
So the first two, the rhythm of communication and the appropriate platform of communication, is that for the, the people that will be on the committee? No?
No. My, I'm going to assume that the members of the building committee are, through a different channel, are regularly updated and provided the information that they need to perform their role effectively. This is everybody.
General public?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Number four?
Send forward a few little requests, so maybe you have the answers to those things.
I do. And, Josh, done it, I hope you like them. So, relative to the student learning goal, the other assessments for specified groups, what groups are you referring to? I'm largely referring to English learners and students with disabilities. And I'm going to channel the energy of a member of our executive leadership team who talked about, you know, a diagnostic assessment that is 100% in English, that, you know, let's say it's a ninth grade diagnostic assessment for a student who maybe just arrived in the country, does not speak any English, and hasn't been in school for two years. That assessment is not appropriate for that student. And so, really being thoughtful about how we can gauge where, you know, those groups of students are, and then identify a place where we expect them to be after, you know, interventions, instruction, and things of that nature over the course of the year. That's what I'm referring to. Some of them don't exist, which is why it's not spelled out.
Okay, so you don't have, they don't have it yet, okay. Yep.
The other question will increase, this is part of, I believe it's the second indicator, the third indicator around English language proficiency. The 49% is the, is the state average. What is it now? The last time we were provided that data was 2020 for the previous year, and it was 44%. Any day now, we'll get the data from last year.
Okay.
And then, with respect to attendance, do you mind if I quote it? I'm just going to read what, e-School, Donna said, "People are outraged, not happy." I think I've heard that pretty consistently since I got here. And nothing against the good folks at e-School, but we have already, and I think this has been executed, Power School. We have already executed an agreement with a new student management system called Power School, which is a fairly well-known and pretty powerful, no pun intended, student management system. That contract has been executed. The process over the course of this year is that those platforms will run parallel, and there'll be a process of migrating over with the expectation of e-School falling off next fall, and then professional development and things of that nature to get people up to speed. That's a pretty typical process. You don't just jump over to the other one, because there's tons of things, things that I don't even know about, that need to be migrated over thoughtfully and carefully. And so, the good news is, the days are numbered for e-School. Communication with teachers regarding students, who are teachers communicating this to? Maybe I don't know what the this is.
Let me see, I, the only other thing that I had had to do with number two under district improvement, under number two for the 1%
Yes.
Each year, okay. You know, rather than bulking all the particular staff at 1%, is there any possibility you could break that down?
I think that is an excellent suggestion.
Teacher's pay hours, you know, whatever.
Yep.
Because, you know, I know our number one goal is we're working on particularly the classroom teachers. So, you know, if the others go up and you hit the 1%, I mean, we really want to see that teacher go up. So that's the only thing, just to break that down.
I, that is absolutely something that I think should happen.
Okay.
Yep. And the second part of it was wanting to know the percentages now.
Yeah.
So, our, we're still in the process of, you know, sort of the data integration with new hires. We have last year's, and we submit this to DESI, and it's actually on their website, not the breakdown by teacher para administrator. But it's going to take maybe another month or so before I can say definitively what that is. But once I have it, I'll definitely bring it here.
That's great.
Member Nicholson?
Thank you. Yeah, just quickly, I just wanted to say, thank you, Dr. Tutwiler, for the updates. I thought, I thought the changes you made sort of captured the discussion. And I'm, you know, really excited about this, the work that we're going to be doing to create sort of a really robust communication plan, so thank you.
Any questions? Do we have any, so are we clear on what we want to do here in terms of what's been discussed tonight, as well as moving forward?
I think there was just one request for change that we need to present in the motion if we're going to approve it.
Is that?
Which is the breakdown.
Three and four, on number four? And the bullets, the key actions? Is that what you're talking about?
I was fine with your clarification. It's Donna's request and
Just on breaking down the percentage.
Yeah.
If you can just, you know.
Include that in the motion of what
Exactly.
Sure.
Motion to approve the superintendent's goals with the change to goal number two, to further break down the different groups within the district to increase by 1%.
Second.
Motion and second made, roll call, please.
Mr. Castellanos?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Oh my goodness, I'm so sorry.
That's okay, Mary.
Ms. Coppola.
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Ms. Gailey?
He's outside.
Did I say it wrong again?
No, no, he made a joke.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Mr. Sadowite?
Yes.
Mayor McGee?
Yes. Next, personal subcommittee, there was a, remember Coppola? I know I came in late from that.
Yep. We had a motion, right?
There a motion to?
There was a motion.
Yeah, maybe Mary might want to read it back to us, then. Mr. Sadowite made a motion to repost the RFP after a discussion with Attorney McCopolas, who recommended that the RFP be re-advertised in the local papers, and a list be provided to the members to include additional places of advertisement through Tim Leonard and recommend to the full committee.
And there was just one other thing, which was to also review the RFP as well before sending out, and that is, the motion so moved?
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Castellanos?
Yes.
Ms. Coppola?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Ms. Gailey?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Mr. Sadowite?
Yes.
Mayor McGee?
Yes.
Thank you. The last on the agenda, Dr. Tutwiler, superintendent's report, are you
Yep.
Prepared to present?
I am. So, we are, today is the, the day on which all students, except for our pre-K and kindergarten students who will start on Monday, reported, and I feel pretty confident in saying that we are off to a good start. I've spent time in schools, as have the deputy superintendents, observed some of the protocols, the way students are moving around, moving about the building. But I think perhaps most importantly, just, you know, soaking in and embracing the happiness that students have, are sort of projecting as they reconnect with peers and with the teachers in their classes. And, you know, I just wanted to say that I think we're off to a good start. Key will be continuing to be vigilant with our protocols, making sure that we are adhering to them tightly, continue to work closely with ISD to make sure that their piece of this super important puzzle is appropriately in place. At present, we are, you know, feverishly collecting consents with hopes of launching our testing program at the end of this month, weekly, by consent, I think I need to say that, because I think some families thought it was mandatory, it is not. That'll be just another layer of our safety approach. So, so far, I think, so good. Usually, I read this document to you, but I'm not going to do that. But that was what the first part said. The second part talks a little bit about the stabilized heal transform, which video went out to families on Tuesday as part of the welcome back message. Staff heard about it at our welcome back, our kickoff event at Manning last week. And so that is also documented in this report. And then finally, as we are all aware, the Lynn Public Schools is eligible for that SRR3 grant. It's in the amount of a little more than 42. It's in the amount of a little more than $42 million. It can be spent over three years. Mr. McQ and I have had an opportunity to take a deep dive on that grant application, and it essentially calls for you to do an allocation plan. They are not looking for, you know, a 30-page, in-depth description of how funds will be spent over the three years. Instead, they're looking for the district's thinking around allocation of the funds in the three buckets into which, you know, funds can be dedicated, and that is learning recovery, mental health and social-emotional learning, and then what they call operations, but that would be like infrastructure, building-related challenges. One key difference with SR3 compared to one and two is the requirement, and I underscore requirement, for robust input from stakeholders in the community about what they would prioritize in terms of the eligible expenditures. I think I have perused somewhere in the neighborhood of 30 or 40 surveys that are out there, and certainly from my superintendent's group, and they're all very simple, where there's a demographic session, section, and then some very pointed, but, you know, not complicated questions about what people would prioritize, and then some options for some general feedback about what people are thinking in terms of, you know, partnership with the district and so forth. And so we've created a survey that will be ready to go, actually, beginning Monday. And with that, I want to walk you through the plan to sort of collect that feedback, make sense of it, and then present to you at the end of the month. And so you'll notice in my superintendent's report in that graphic, under plan, the very first thing is advisory development. I'm actually gonna put a pin in that and come back to that at the very, at the very end. Survey has been developed, and tomorrow it will be translated and be prepared to go out in a, you know, through our various platforms to families and our community partners on Monday. And so you look and engage, the week of September 13th is when the survey will go out. I've already planned a virtual town hall on the 20th of September. Part of that will be sort of, the whole thing will be general feedback about our launch to the school year, and I might have some updates to share with families. Then the other piece will be related to SR3, the feedback that I'm seeing so far, and an opportunity for additional feedback. The plan is to post the outcomes from the survey on the 27th, the week of the 27th. And I'm also planning to take that feedback and begin to shape an allocation plan that will be shared with the school committee on the 24th of September, with hopes of a conversation and potential vote on the 30th of September. I left the advisory piece out until the very end. I actually should have just put it at the end. But, you know, again, the grant application calls for a very high-level sort of description of, you know, how the funds will be allocated. I think where the rubber meets the road is having a diverse group of stakeholders who come together and take the next step in terms of understanding and thinking about the allocation and the execution of our plans with those funds thereafter. So having this group sort of ride shotgun, give feedback, offer ideas, make suggestions, I think will be really important for the remainder of this year and frankly beyond as we think about how we want to, you know, do everything from provide intervention programs after school or in the summer or on vacation, think about ways that we want to more deeply partner with families. Having that thought partnership with a diverse group of stakeholders feels important to me. Here we go.
Member Castellanos?
Just a quick question. So part of that, that, you know, develop and thought partners, have you already put together, assembled some folks?
No. Nope, I've not, I mean, I have some ideas of who I want to invite in terms of students and families, and then, you know, we have, you know, sort of regular interaction with what I call my partner, partner agencies, particularly around reopening, just groups of community-based organizations with whom we work closely. But I've not put that together yet.
And it reminds me of the time we did the district-wide strategic plan process.
Very, very similar.
Obviously a short window of time. It was very helpful to have, you know, folks from the teachers' union from public, you had all the different stakeholders in one room. Because this is, as you said, like, you need folks, if you're gonna identify, we need, if there's a need that we need to address, we need to be very thorough within the application, as you just said. And to carry that out seems very, like, we want to make sure that we execute this and that you have all the resources available to make sure that we get as much as possible
Right, that's right.
in this amount of time.
Yep.
Member Nicholson, then Member Sadoway, then Member Capola.
Thank you for the update. Just, you know, this is obviously a really exciting opportunity, and I'm glad that we have a real communication plan here. The, the virtual town hall, the last couple of town halls that I've seen have, I think, been well-attended, well-facilitated, and had the live translation as well, I assume this will as well.
True.
And then is there, I wonder if there's a way to, you know, I think promoting the survey completion at the town hall makes sense, but given the sort of technological capabilities we have, is there a way to sort of, to get live feedback from people in the town hall as well, to sort of supplement survey completion?
Yes, I mean, I have done polls and things of that nature in a Zoom. I don't know if that exists in a webinar. I've not tried that. But that's certainly something that could be really powerful, to sort of put a question or an idea up and allow people to give feedback in the moment, absolutely.
And you can save it. You can go, you can just save all the comments, right-click on the little dots.
Yep, for sure. Right, or, I definitely know how to save the chat, so I could also, I could also have people respond in there. Now, that would absolutely be a really impactful way to host that meeting.
Great, thank you.
Member Sadoway?
What was your superintendent intern's name during the...
Danny.
Danny, I wish we still got him.
Me too, me too. Danny's got a newborn, though. Danny, Danny, Danny's not available right now.
Just a quick question with regards to facilities. And, you know, my daughters at Pickering. What, who's picking the criteria as to putting up tents for there to be space outside for our teachers and educators or students that might not want to eat?
Yeah, so, I mean, I've had a couple of conversations relative to that at Pickering, the idea of a tent. You know, at a number of our schools, it might appear like there's, one could feasibly go up, but it can't. And so we think that we found a strip of land that could accommodate a tent, and we're planning, I think, to have one of the purveyors come out and give us some feedback on that as soon as...
Yeah, we're working on it now.
...tomorrow or Monday. But we, we're not tent people. I mean, we leave that up to the tent folks.
No, you know, obviously, in here you said by observation and general feedback, the opening has gone smoothly, and all I'm saying is the feedback that I've received from parents was, why is it only in some places? So it's good to have at least a response to that, to share that there's gonna be a continuous review to see if there can be any adjustments made to make the experience of both our educators and our students a little bit more safer.
Yeah, you know, and I don't want to give the impression that there wasn't that kind of thoughtfulness over the course of the summer with tents. I mean, if you go to classical or English or Breed in the back, you'd have to go back there, but they all have space for that to happen pretty successfully. Many schools don't when you start thinking about parking and logistics and things of that nature. But certainly, you know, we tasked principals with the idea, like, if you, if there's a viable place, it will be funded, we will, let's move forward with it. And Pickering, I mean, we've had that conversation a number of times, and we just didn't think. And, you know, they've got a big field out back, but logistically, like, you know, going from the cafeteria all the way out to that field, they need to be supervised. It's sometimes when you peel back the layers, it's a lot harder than people think, but we do think we might have a space, we just have to wait and see what the tent folks say.
When you're in the mix of things, obviously, things come up, you know? So that's what I was just saying. You know, obviously, we're in, we're in school.
Yep.
You know, we saw with traffic today, you know, that we're fully into it. So with that, like I'm saying, I just want there to be a continuous review to see if there can be anything done. Obviously, I don't want, I don't think many kids feel so safe in areas of, that you're really pretty much sitting on top of a person next to you when you're eating lunch. So that's, that's what I'm hearing. Thank you.
Member Capola, then Member Gaetley.
That SR money, do we need to share that with any other educational? Like, sometimes in the back, in the past, we've had grant money that we have to share with, you know, the charter school, we had to share with the, not this, though.
I have not seen any documentation on this.
Excellent, okay. So it is all bong jokes.
Okay, excellent.
Member Gaetley?
I guess this would be to you, Mr. Giro. When I taught at Pickering so long ago, there was a courtyard.
That's exactly where we're looking.
And also at Breed, there's a courtyard. I don't know if they still use it.
So Breed last year did have a tent in the back, in that courtyard in the back. She actually opted not to do a tent this year because they felt they, the students really didn't utilize it the way they thought they would.
Okay.
Pickering did not have a tent last year, but this year they're looking at the courtyard. A company is supposed to go either tomorrow or Monday to take a look at it, to see, is it feasible to put a tent there?
Yeah.
So we are working on that now. Classical and English both had their two tents each go up this week, so I believe English went up yesterday. So I assume that Classical either also went up yesterday or is going up today or tomorrow.
Yeah, because I remembered they were cleaning out the courtyard at Pickering and...
Yep, that's the exact space we're looking at.
Did nothing with it, but now that you have that space, that's, thank you, I'm glad we're on the same page.
Other questions?
Motion?
Motion?
To adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, then Mayor.
Second.
Second? Roll call, please.
Mr. Castellanos?
Yes.
Ms. Capola?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Ms. Gaetley?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Mr. Sadoway?
Yes.
Mayor McGee?
Yes.